You're good on my camera.
I'd like to call to order this town of Dayton Board of Selectmen meeting. It is Wednesday, November fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three, and it is six thirty-four. This is a hybrid meeting, we assume, in person, we're at the Council on Aging Fine Time, ten fifty-nine Somerset Ave. Public input may be provided using the following methods. You can contact our office at boardofselectmen@dighton-mass.gov to provide input prior to the meetings, via Zoom call and by phone, see information above, I'm sorry. Continue playing on Dayton Channel nine and on YouTube at www.youtube.com-townofdayton. This meeting is being recorded. The listings of matters are those reasonably anticipated by the chair, which may be discussed at the meeting. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. At this time, can I ask that we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? And then can I just have us stay standing afterwards for a moment of silence?
Our allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Since our last meeting, following residents of Dayton have passed. Maureen Bacon, John Berset, James Ducha, Anita Marcello, John Torres, and Mary Rebello. Our thoughts and condolences go out to their families at this time. Thank you.
Great, um, do we need to do a roll call?
No.
No, okay. Um, can I get a motion to open the hearing?
So move.
Um, and, oh, and that used to really be two of us. Do we second that? I had stepped down to second that.
Second, yeah.
Um, and then, I second that, can I get a vote?
Aye.
Nicole Mello, aye.
Uh, just state what, where we read the others, we're the district, United States, it's the town of Dayton.
Right. What?
You s- this classification hearing is to set the tax rates for the town of Dayton, residential and commercial.
And Board of Assessors is part of it.
So we should be good to go, do we have a presentation from the Board of Assessors? The PowerPoint is that. Oh, yeah, like I can, yep, I can put up online, and we can work out that. Okay, here we are.
So is this going on Zoom as well?
Uh, yeah, ye- yes, uh, yeah, we don't have any on Zoom, but, yes, I can, I can share the screen. So if anyone does jump on. Okay. Okay, we should be good to go, Bill.
So if you just wanna scroll through it and, um, you know, you want me to talk?
Yeah.
It's not, you made the presentation, that's okay. Um, so, so this meeting is to set the tax rate, uh, which is the split of the value between residential and commercial property. We'll advise you the excess levy capacity, we'll present additional information including property assessments, new growth, and projected taxes. Do you want me to go over some of the used terms, or can I just skip those accounts?
Yeah, yeah, like, uh, yeah, like, either way, like, whatever, yeah, like, whether it fits with the board of selectmen.
What's, what the Board of Selectmen want, do you guys want me to go?
Do you guys need?
I've already remuted.
You did, okay.
Yes.
Yes.
So we can skip the terms.
All right.
And just for anybody that's listening, um, on t- television or Zoom, um, this information is all available on the Dayton website, so they can see this packet uh, exactly as presented here. Um, so we're going to, uh, determine the, as I said, percentage of the tax levy, uh, each class of property. Uh, minimum residential factor is determined by the makeup of our tax base. This factor allows the Board of Selectmen to shift the burden, um, to a maximum of one point seven pi percent, and we'll be talking about that, I'll be talking about that in detail at the end of this. The, important to know that whatever number that the Board of Selectmen chooses this evening is not going to change the total amount of taxes collected by the town. This only determines who pays the taxes that have already been determined by town meetings. Is a, uh, minimum residential factor, as I said, is up to one point seven five percent. Um, I would not use those, we've revised these numbers, that's on this slide. And we should go on what's on the Excel spreadsheet, so.
Okay.
So, come on, skip that page, please. This picture is, uh, almost very interesting when I went through this because we've often heard the phrase that Dayton, and I've even, I may have even said the phrase that Dayton has the highest tax rate around. However, when you combine the tax rate with the valuation of properties, we're actually kind of dead center as far as how much we are paying in taxes, and this chart shows that. This chart is showing the, uh, classes, the current values and percentages. I can't use, 'cause I can't read that one. So eighty-eight percent of our stuff is residential, two point three seven percent is commercial, as well as industrial, personal property makes up six point nine five percent. So obviously, the vast majority of our properties are taxed, or our levy to tax is on residential properties. What do we do to change the assessed values? We're required by the Department of Revenue, um, to review, to assess the property at one hundred percent full fair cash evaluation. That means that our test, our assessed values have to reflect the market value of what properties are actually selling for. If we did not value them at market value, they would not be approved by the state. The maximum allowed levy, uh, for the fiscal year of two thousand twenty-four is twenty-two million, three hundred and thirty-seven dollars, three hundred and sixty-two cents. Um, and this includes the previously proved debt exclusions of six, six eleven, six forty-four. I think I should have brought my glasses, I didn't know I'd be reading across the, um.
You do five.
Our new growth was certified and approved, uh, to be three hundred and ninety-eight thousand. Now, this number is three hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars in taxes, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Um, so that's not the value that went up, that's the amount that we are collecting off of the new growth. And from that, um, two hundred and two is from upgraded inventory, and a hundred and ninety-five is from real estate, thousands.
I read that.
All right, now that's my bad chart.
Now you can refer to what's in front of you.
Oh, that's this, yeah, that's this, uh, we're gonna be, and there's a new, there's a new one, so. Make that one go really quickly, yes, it's not correct. Was that the last page?
It is, yes.
Yes, that's it, yeah.
So you have the yours.
Yeah, does, I wanna make sure all the Board of Selectmen have the correct one. The number to look at is the, um, the levying number over here, should say two-two-one-nine-four-five-six-eight.
Three-two.
That's the correct one. Two-two-one.
Two-two?
Two-two-one-nine-four-five-six-eight, that's the correct one.
Yeah.
So if I may, um, go ahead with your recommendation, or do you have any questions about the presentation?
Um, any comments?
Well, last year, there was a slight shift to the commercial tax rate. I would not recommend that we change that or go up any higher on the commercial side.
If, if I may, let me go, let me go over the recommendation and why, because it's very different from last year, as you just said. So what we've seen here, uh, so first of all, the, the tax rate, the current shift is one point six seven as of last year. So if you look at this top column, that's where it tells you what kind of what the current situation is, where the average property being forced hundred and sixteen thousand dollars with a one point six seven shift factor, ending up with a rate of thirteen dollars and ninety-four cents, and a tax bill of five thousand eight hundred and nine dollars. Now, what happened there, if you look at what happened between fiscal year two thousand twenty-three and fiscal year two thousand twenty-four, the average single value, that, sorry, the average single family residential property value went from four hundred and sixteen thousand dollars to four hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. So it went up like ten percent, okay? Now, if you go to the column on the right, and you see that the commercial property went from three hundred and eighty-four thousand, nine hundred and ten, to three hundred and eighty-six thousand, it only went up about two thousand dollars. So there's, basically, what we're looking at is there was a massive jump in residential property value, and a small increase on the, uh, commercial property. So if we were to maintain the same, like, we kept one point six seven, if you look on the chart here, it's about, hmm, almost two-thirds of the way down the page, you'll see that that's gonna result in an increase on the residential side of four hundred and ninety dollars for the year. But on the commercial side, they would get an eighty-dollar tax cut. This is entirely because of the giant leap in property values on the residential side. So for this reason, and Board of Assessors, we've all discussed this, and it is human wisdom,
Right.
um, that we are recommending that we go to the maximum allowed split of one point seven five. And our reasoning for this is because at one point seven five, which is easily seen as the last line on this chart, you will see that the residential increase will be four hundred and seventeen dollars, and the commercial increase will be three hundred and ninety dollars. So what that means is that taxes are going up. Um, we have, and, and I want, one more thing I wanna talk to you about, about that in a second, but taxes have gone up significantly because of the money that was spent at town meetings. And because of that, we gotta bear the burden, but if we don't change the tax shift, that burden is going to be disproportionately taken by the residential people. So by, by chaining it to one point seven five, which is, by the way, this is the maximum, this is as far as we can go, we can't go any higher, uh, for next year or the year after, this is as high as it goes. It is a fair balance between residential and commercial. Um, I also wanted to mention that about, you know, how much are we taxing? There is, we are actually almost at our levy limit. Um, so for those that may not understand Proposition Two and a Half, Proposition Two and a Half is what sets our levy limit and the maximum amount that any town can charge for taxes. Now, we have for a number of years been at a point where we have been well below the amount that we can charge. This year is gonna be the last year that we're gonna be able to make up the tax increase. This is like a leap sentence of six point, something.
Six point.
Six point six.
Six point six percent tax increase. We're not gonna be able to do that next year. Next year, it's gonna be two and a half percent, end of story, hard stop. So this is gonna be some tough decisions.
And why is it a two and a half shift?
Because the two and a half percent property, the, probably two and a half, what that means is there's a maximum. That, that says the seal, and every year that marches up by two and a half percent, plus any new growth or new, like, like somebody builds a new house or whatever, that's not counted as part of our calculation. So that number goes up by two and a half percent every year, regardless of what we've actually taxed. So we have been actually taxing significantly under that limit. And as, and what I was just saying to the Board of Selectmen is that, as of this year, we're hitting that limit. So we can't go any higher.
Well, it seems to me my taxes go up a lot every year.
Unfortunately, and, and I was in your seat several years ago, and, and was told that, and correctly so, that this is not the appropriate venue for that, because where we set the taxes, how, like I said at the beginning, at the outset, our taxes are not set by this meeting. Our taxes are set by town meeting, where people decide on what they're gonna spend. Here, we are simply determining where the balance goes, and what I'm advocating for is the least amount of effect on the residential properties. Okay?
And then when you add in, that is excluded, like, say for the BP, or?
That isn't here yet, but.
Right, but I'm so open, like, for the police station and all that, would that go?
That is in here.
Okay.
Correct.
Okay.
And that's all I have, unless you guys have any questions, any questions?
Just an observation. Outstanding presentation, it was clear, easy to understand.
The PowerPoint is completely Stephanie's, I was just reading, so thank you.
I'd like to say, for the record too, Stephanie did a great job.
Great job.
This is as good as it's been for the town, so people can understand it and ask questions because it's easy to understand, if not, then they can come to us and ask more questions, but, nice job, Stephanie, nice job.
Thank you, Stephanie.
Very nice. So the Board of Assessment has to take a vote on the recommendation for you before you guys do yours, so.
We do your actual vote?
Yes.
We do, okay.
Um, so I will make a, a motion that the, this board recommend to the Board of Selectmen for Act Twenty-four, that the split be one point seven five for residential, and which would, uh, equal an, uh, estimated increase in taxes of four hundred and seventeen dollars and eighty-five cents per year, again residential, and a one point seven five split commercial, which would mean an increase of three hundred and ninety dollars and seventy-nine cents annually.
Seconded. Motion made and seconded, any discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Madam Chairman, I would like to make a motion for the town of Dayton to adopt a residential factor of one point seven five, and a commercial, industrial, and personal property factor of one point seven five for fiscal year two thousand twenty-four.
I'll step down and second that, do we need a vote?
Aye.
And I step down and I'm in, and the motion passes.
Just to be clear, there's one rate, it's one point seven five, they're not seconding.
Right.
Can I get a motion to close the hearing?
I would like to make a motion to close the hearing with the Board of Assessors.
And I'll step down and second that, a vote?
Aye.
Aye. And the motion passes.
Motion to close the hearing?
Seconded.
Motion made and seconded, all's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to adjourn?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. You're adjourned.
Aye, aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming. So we have Shara Pasta, town clerk, um, update on, did I say her name right? I practiced. I'm, I'm town clerk's office.
Awesome, do I have to stand up?
It's, it's entirely up to you, this is a.
Yeah, it's kind of a smaller meeting.
Odd venue.
I was expecting to have the podium.
We're not fancy.
Just good. Um, all right, so I will.
It's because the Board of Assessors, it's all low ranked. Thank you.
Okay, um, so I will start, I, first of all, I wanna say thank you and good evening. I'm here to kind of give an update on the happenings in the town clerk's office. I have been, um, the town clerk now for three and a half months. It seems like a little bit boring, 'cause we've gotten a lot done. Um, first, I wanted to discuss what we have done to get ready for elections. We attended the MTCA, which is the Mass Town Clerks Association Conference in Springfield. The focus was all about elections. We went over election equipment, election rules and regulations, what needs to be done before, during, and after each election. We also attended the Tri-County Clerks Association meeting with the main focus being on poll pads. And if you're wondering what poll pads are, I will tell you. These are electronic check-ins for voters. This takes place of all the paper check-ins, they're amazing. They are more accurate and much faster. Each poll pad prints out a receipt that gets kept as an election record, the same way we currently keep the paper records from the check-in books. It eliminates the reams of legal-sized paper that each election worker has to go through. They are the size of a recipe card, probably a li- little smaller, the receipts. It's as easy as entering the first three letters of the voter's first name and the first three letters of their last name, or it can be read from a driver's license. They check you in and are able to tell you if you have already voted, and if they are in the correct precincts. They count how many check-ins you have real time, and are able to be matched with the DS two hundred, and this confirms real time, and if they are on the same count. Out of three hundred and fifty-one cities and towns, most are moving toward using the poll pads. Most of the surrounding cities and towns use them currently, including Free Town, Tonn, Rehoboth, um, just a few. So, you know, they are absolutely fantastic, and I will keep talking about them. Um, we also attended the special town meeting on October thirtieth. We had ninety-six voters attend, we had seven election workers, plus Ashley and Becky. It is not a norm to have the clerk step in as moderator, and that was interesting, and gives me a whole new perspective on that position.
It was fun, wasn't it?
To say the least. I ended up approving the appropriation and certifying the minutes, um, to be posted this week. We attended the training in Tonn with the Elections Director Mark Pacico, and then we were able to work the November seventh city election, which I might add, Becky and I rocked it, and I was very proud of us. We opened and closed our precinct, the day went very smooth, and we had zero issues. State and town committee nomination papers were due to us by Friday, November tenth, and we were able to certify and return to the petitioners before the November seventeenth deadline, and everyone has picked up their papers, and an amount of time to be able to forward to the state by Tuesday, the twenty-first. We are now currently receiving initiative petitions for several potential initiatives that may go onto the presidential ballot in November, for November two thousand twenty-four. We are verifying voter eligibility signatures through the state computer on thousands of papers. Currently, last but not least with the elections, we are anticipating lots of changes from both the state computers and the vital records that are now attend, and we're now actually attending online classes for that as well. And just a little bit of what else we've been working on, we've been working really hard in our office. Some of the other projects that we have been working on have been, we've spent a lot of time going through our cemetery files and maps for the active cemeteries. We updated and went through old files and created new filing system and new mapping system. We have created SOPs, so the process is more streamlined. Tom Ferring was actually a really big help to us for this. We also ordered new dog license registration forms and tags, so we are prepared for the January dog licensing. Now that we are fully staffed, we were able to catch up on backed-up rabies certificates, which was a lot. We now have a process in place. When these come through, it is gonna be more streamlined and organized. Applications will again be sent out with the census. And speaking of the census, we will be sending out our final draft next week to the Mass mailers for the two thousand twenty-four census street listings. The census is extremely important for voting purposes. If you do not fill out your census, you are not, you actually are in an active voter, and then you actually have to fill out a voter affirmation form. Um, it is very easy to fill out, all they have to do is come to the warden, whoever the warden would be, and show their license, fill out this, um, affirmation, and then they're able to vote. We also deal a lot in public records requests on any given day. Some examples of requests we are getting are genealogy requests, voter records requests, and conservation and permitting requests that we have to reach out and get the information. We have public request forms, both online and in the office, as you know, they have to be completed within ten days, and we do get quite a few. We ordered archival sleeves for our vital records for the births, deaths, and marriage certificates. We have birth records from the late eighteen hundreds to the mid nineteen hundreds that are sitting in a box and need to be placed in archival sleeves for pre- preservation purposes. This is our next project, 'cause it is quite a bit. We now have the town policies merged in one system, and Ashley has been working diligently, making sure everyone is in compliance, which includes the Code of Conduct, anti-harassment, social media, tobacco, smoke, drug-free workplace, et cetera. And the conflict of interest is now just online. We are working on a project with, Becky has been working diligently and getting all appointments up to date and in one place, so it's more streamlined and now searchable. We have also recently created a town clerk's email. This email will be for police traffic tickets that we end up getting, Unipay, and then we'll eventually have all meeting notices go to this email. It'll now be thetownclerk@dighton-ma.gov, and this will be good for the fact that if I'm not here, Becky and Ashley can look into this and, and do their part, or vice versa, so we can all work together. And lastly, I would like to say, I am truly loving my position as a town clerk. It is extremely rewarding. I am fortunate to work with an exceptional team, Rebecca Mello and Ashley Dagnall. With our collaborative spirit, I know we will continue to drive our success. That is my update.
Thank you. And I just wanna mention, you did a fabulous job at town meeting, that was a difficult, that was a difficult one, and you, you, you handled it very well.
My job.
Very happy to have you on board, you done a wonderful job.
Thank you.
I, I do ask.
Yes.
Regarding census forms.
Yes.
Not returned, and I know when the census form goes out, there is a letter explaining what could happen if they're not returned.
Correct.
I, I would ask, if at all possible, that the clerk, clerk's office send a letter out to any voter who does not return their census form, explaining that their name has been dropped from the rolls. So as a result, you're sending out the census form with a letter?
Mm-hmm.
They don't return it, a second letter would go out, they can't say they didn't know.
Correct. I wonder if we can, to save on the budget, 'cause I'm very frugal with my budget, um, I'm wondering if we can have that posted to the website, as well as maybe on, um, social media, um, our board, something like that, to save, um... our board, something like that, to save on postage.
Do you have a lot of people who don't return them?
You'd be surprised. You'd be surprised how many we end up getting originally, and then they kind of trickle in. But what I fear is that the new census will go out. And we do have a March presidential primary, which is a big election. And so we want to be prepared for that. I can definitely look in to see how many we get in, how many that are still waiting, and maybe see what the, how many we would have to, reminders we would have to send out.
Okay.
Yep. Oh, good idea.
Great, so we'll move on to Pat Gales, Chairman of the Dyton Historical Commission, to speak on the 250th Anniversary Committee. Thank you for coming, you're welcome.
Basically, I'm here to remind you that you have to select one, the selectmen to be on the committee, as it does mean. So the committee is, you know, to celebrate the 250th anniversary of the United States of America. I'm seeing a lot more online. The Revolution 250 is Massachusetts State Group. And they have quite a few events already planned and a lot of information about upcoming events. Next one is, that I'm really excited about, is December 16th is the Boston Tea Party. And they're going to be reenacting the Tea Party. So hopefully, we'll have some information about that on the Facebook page for the Historical Commission. We are making progress as far as the people to be on the committee. I definitely have a yes from the town historian and a yes from the Veterans Agent Ray Hay. I know that the community church is meeting tonight, and it's on their agenda. The Historical Commission is aware of it, so there's a couple of people that are kind of considering it and will let me know, like they would like to be the president of the Historical Society. I'm sorry, the society. The commission hasn't designated anyone yet, but they will in December. And I've been talking to, oh, and also I had a contact with the Minutemen's Group. And they're meeting in November too, and which month they will get back to me. And there is some interest there, people joining us. And we also need a department head that you, you as a selectman would designate. I've talked to a couple of people in town, a little arm twisting for one, that are considering it too. So we're making progress. I'd really like to have everyone on board, like December, so that we can meet in January to get going. There's a lot of information out there. And I just wanted to clarify, the only ones that have to be appointed are the ones...
Are the three.
At large.
Community at large.
Yeah.
Yes.
And they would fill out the volunteer application?
Yes, exactly. And then, yeah, like, and then as you mentioned, the board just, the board just doesn't want their own.
Right.
Yeah, like, and then one about the department heads as well.
And then everyone has to be sworn in to be on the committee.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. So I'm just here really to remind you that you need to make a decision who it's going to be. I'm like the squeaky wheel, you know?
Peter's not here, so I pick him.
Could we put that on the agenda for the next meeting?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Nancy?
I was cleaning up some stuff, and when I did the book for the Towns 300, I came across this. I don't know if you've seen this or not.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Pass along, the Board of Selectmen and another, another group of town officials actually did a reenactment. And they're all listed here, who, who the, let's say, the key play is in town where 200 years ago. So I'll read this and...
Is that from 1962?
No, 62 is the 250th.
That's, yeah, okay.
This is the 200th.
The 200th, okay. Okay, 1976.
When I did the 300, I got tons of stuff. And I returned most of the stuff that was loaned to me. I happened to find this, and since I saw your agenda, I thought, well, I'll turn this in and you can look at it and pass it on to the commission to see if this is something they might want to do. As I said, I know most of the play isn't here. I was around for this one too. The other thing I wanted to mention was, I saw in the, I think it was where you listed the committee members.
Yes.
My question was, why is there only one church represented? We have at least two other very historic churches in this town, the Brick Church and West Dyton. And although that may be the oldest building, I don't believe it's the oldest congregation. When I was doing research for the 300th Anniversary Book, I keep thinking, Brick Church might have been the successor to Buck Plain, but that's something that needs to be checked out.
Yeah, there, so there's the first meeting house, and that one burns, the one on Elm Street. And the second one was the Buck Plain, that one burns. That's, you're right, that, at the same time that the, that congregation was going to the Brick Church, the Unitarian Church, the community church is established. So they're kind, and I think that congregation doesn't really get back into the flow of things until later on.
What was pointed out to me, I don't belong to any of these churches, but what was pointed out to me was, number one, there are congregations that, plural, that would be older than what's at the community church. Again, this is going to have to be researched. But I think the fact that at least there were two other very historic churches in town that were successes of what was and what burned down, that should be looked at. And maybe the three churches together might do something or whatever. I just think it's important that, since this is a historical event that we're celebrating, West Dyton and Brick at least should be somehow looked at, just for their historical. And they may, they may want to participate or import or something. But it was mentioned, and I, I talked to a few people and listened to people that have attended, that do attend these. And I thought, I remembered what came up when I was doing pictures for the Anniversary Book. All of those churches, those historic churches, plus the other, the other, at least two or three others that were operational at that time, there are pictures in that Anniversary Book. So I just mentioned that. As I say, we don't love them, but there were three that I think you would consider really historic, okay? And then the other thing I wanted to mention, and looking at the list of positions into tribal council, I didn't see it on there. Let's face it, 200 years ago, the original Americans were around and about.
That's a good point.
And the contact person, I believe, is still Rusty Haskell in Berkeley. I think I gave that to you once before.
Yeah, yeah.
And his sister, I think is still here at, I think she was still works at Primetime. But anyhow.
That was a total oversight.
We...
That's a really good point.
We... They used to participate a lot in programs here, on Memorial Days, when we, especially when we had the joint ones. But also, when we had the official opening of the Old Town Hall, we did invite Mr. Haskell, and he did come. And so that's, I think that's an important one we've got to have in there.
All right, thank you Nancy. Did you have anything else?
Nope.
No, okay.
Just you and someone.
Yes, we will. It sounds like it's going to go on the next...
Yeah, the 29th of January.
And also the department head one?
Yes, yeah, like, I, I had the vote beyond the 29th agenda. And, and they, like, I have, oh, and I have a really good, I have a really good feeling you'll probably reach out to me on the 27th. Just, just to give me a friendly reminder as well.
Okay, okay, I'll do that. And I won't be here on the 29th, so you'll have to handle it on your own.
That's fine, we can do that, thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Pat.
Great, we're going to announcements. The Town Parking Ban, no person shall park a motor vehicle between the hours of 12:00 midnight to 6:00 a.m. on any street from November 1st of each year to April 1st of the following year. Please take notice. The Town of Dyton Food Bank will be held next on November 18th, located at the Town Hall, 979 Somerset Ave, this is in the lower level. The Town of Dyton will be holding two public meetings on the same day to hear and learn from you, our residents, about what you feel can't do, what you feel we can do to make our new library accessible to anyone who has a disability. While some disabilities are obvious, many are hidden, so it is critical to hear from you. This will be on Monday, November 27th. It will be at Old Town Hall, 111, 111, no, I always say 1111. 1111 Somerset Ave, Dyton. It's at 3:00 p.m., and then again, it will be at 6:00 p.m. The Dyton Council on Aging received a license through the Massachusetts State Lottery to play bingo every Monday from 1:00 to 2:00 p.m. at the Dyton Council on Aging. 10:59 Somerset Ave, starting in October, cards of $1. Please bring cash. Come and support the Friends of the Dyton Library and create a beautiful Christmas wreath. This is on Tuesday, December 5th, at 6:00 p.m. Rubio Farms, 1522 William Street. The price is $45 per person. You can either stop by the farm and sign up, and, or you can prepay for the class. Their phone number is 508-669-6988. Town Administrator Report?
Hi, yes. Okay, just, I just actually have two quick things. The first, I want to really thank Tana Cohen, the Principal Assessor, the Treasurer and the Town Clerk, who, who for, for the better part of the last, the better part of the last two to three weeks have been, have been working, have been working day in and day out to get us here tonight with actually hearing. We have, we have, as we know, a whole, we have a whole and fun answer team. I've been here for just under three years. We have Tana Cohen, who's, who has been here for just over a year now. We, we have a Principal Assessor, who has been here now for two years. We have a Treasurer, who has, who has been with us for, for the last year and a half. And we have, and as we know, we have a Town Clerk, who has been with us for only a few months now. And the, we have the work and the effort that, oh, yeah, like, actually heads into act... Ah, yeah, like, oh, yeah, like, everything, everything that goes into making tonight possible. Oh, yeah, like, the huge behind-the-scenes effort. And, yeah, like, we just have an awesome, awesome, awesome... Oh, yeah, we just have a great, you know, we're going to get better. And so I, ah, 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 yeah, so, ah, ah, yeah, so I just wanted to take a moment to recognize and thank them. We also, as of, ah, yeah, we also, as of November 14th to December 14th, we have open enrollment for town Dyton retirees. And, ah, 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 probably the week, probably the week, yeah, probably the week after Thanksgiving, we're working on confirming it now. But we, but, ah, but we will have an open enrollment meeting for all, we will have an open enrollment meeting for all town retirees. And so I hope, I, hopefully by the end of this week, we'll have some information on that as well. But, yeah, I think that's all I have on that tonight.
Thank you. We'll move on to the Selectmen Reports. He is not here, and I'm sad because I know solid waste, there was going to be pizza, so I was hoping to hear about that. I'll have to put that off till next time. In regards to the Commission on Disability, we had our first meeting in quite some time. We went over the KMA report. All the members were given a copy, and they're going to review it in the next coming weeks before we meet again and kind of put down on a list of what we think are priorities from that report. That's all I have. Selectmen Hall?
Yes, thank you. This evening, the Dyton Water District set their tax rate. I might add, it is down 32 cents from last year. Their tax split was 1.75. The residential rate will be $1.17. And the commercial rate will be $2.28. I believe that's a policy. Based on a $1,000 increase. The last Wednesday, the Dyton Water District had, I'm sorry, last Thursday, the Dyton Water District had their fall special town meeting. Unfortunately, it was not well-attended. The one major expenditure was for the Cedar Street Well. It was appropriated $384,000 from available cash toward the $582,000 cost for the rebuilding of the Cedar Street Well. That is in the Water District. Last night, the school department met. They had the second reading of the parental notification on sex education. There is going to be a slight change in the policy. And all parents will be required to sign in or opt out. So when you do receive your notice, if it should pass the third reading, very important that you respond to this. It'll make it easier on the school department, so they don't have to chase down families to get a signature, either to opt in or opt out. This program is coming down from the state. It is controversial, and parents really need to pay close attention to the new curriculum that the state is pulling forth. The school committee also approved a highly successful, very prominent volleyball camp for Dyton Rehoboth Regional High School from July 29th to August 2nd. And that will be the BEN, B-E-H-N volleyball camp. The last item I'd like to talk about is MCAS results at the Dyton Elementary School, Dyton Middle School, and at Dyton Rehoboth Regional High School. It should be noted that, especially in the area of math, the Dyton students showed significant increase in performance. Dyton Elementary School, overall, their math score has improved by 10%. Grade eight math scores improved by 12%. In the eyes of the state, anything 10 or above is significant. So we're seeing some very good progress. At the high school, again, the overall increase, especially in the area of math, was 10%. And overall, in ELA, science and math, Dyton Rehoboth Regional High School saw a 10% increase above the state average. In the area of English language app, this test is not easy. 10 students had perfect scores. In the area of math, one student had a perfect math, MCAS math score. And in science, two students had perfect MCAS M scores. So credos need to go out to the principal of Dyton Elementary, Dyton Middle, Dyton Rehoboth Regional High School, and also to Superintendent Bill Rumi and his, his team. Because good things are starting to come together in the Dyton Rehoboth Regional School District.
That's right.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'm seeing no old business, no new business. Can I get approval of the warrants?
Adam Chairman, I would like to make a motion that we pay the warrant for November 16th, 2023. Item 21A-24 of 100... Item twenty-one A dash twenty-four of one hundred fifteen thousand, six hundred seventy-six dollars, nineteen cents. Item twenty-one B dash twenty-four, three hundred seventy-three thousand, one hundred eighty dollars and eighty-five cents.
I'll step down and second that. Um, can I get a vote?
Aye.
An aye. Um, correspondence, I have a letter from Robbie De Souza with the recommendation to appoint Annabelle Powell as a temporary tenant board member. Um, from this letter, it is my understanding that no, um, Lincoln Village tenants put in notice of intent to sit as, um, Dyton Housing Authority Town Appointed Tenant Board Member, that's a multiple. Um, so the board had, um, put forth a request for us to appoint Annabelle, um, Powell and she has held this position, um, prior to the last resident, it says.
Madam Chair.
Okay.
This board established a policy several months ago. And in light of problems that we had with it, I'm going to ask that we be consistent in our application of this policy. And with that, I would recommend that this be tabled to the twenty-ninth of your members' meeting.
I'll step down and I'll second that. Um, a vote?
Aye.
And then an aye. Thank you for that. Um, also, I have a letter from Lisa Mello. She is resigning as the library assistant position.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to accept the resignation of Lisa Mello as the library assistant with sincere thanks and appreciation for her service to the town.
I'll step down and I'll second that. And can I get a vote?
Aye.
And then I'm an aye. Um, public input, do we have any public input? Can you even, go ahead, you go first.
Um, Laura Madera, sixteen forty-five Maple Street. I'm talking as more of a stay away person than a resident. Um, we have exciting news. Our newsletter will be in color next month. Um, we just got them delivered and they're gonna be addressed and sorted and mailed out. But just a heads up, it is in color and in January, we're gonna have a whole new template to it. Um, so just to stay tuned for that.
That's exciting.
Yeah, I'm very excited.
Soon that you're gonna get in the mail.
And I'll have the color.
Yeah. Alright, Nancy?
Um, this morning, I attended via Zoom, uh, a GAFIC meeting. GAFIC stands for the Greater Attleboro-Tonton Housing Consortium. And the main topic was the five-year plan that they were working on for housing. So there were two consultants present and they had some questions about, uh, different towns. And I mentioned that Dyton is working on updating their, uh, affordable housing plan. Uh, they were aware of that, so I'm not sure who contacted them, but, um, this housing plan, uh, now will be finished up. There will be two public hearings, uh, on this proposed housing plan before it gets sent to HUD. Dates, times, locations will be announced and I will be sure to get that out. They usually have the hearings on the same day. And it's usually morning in Middleborough and evening like six PM in Attleboro to get as many of the, uh, communities that are in the GAFIC group to be able to send people and they have residents, look at this. Um, there was also dis, also discussion about availability of affordable housing. I gave them a quick update on the housing. Strawberry Fields is tied up. Um, Forest Hills is tied up. Uh, Arborcrest is sort of on hold right now, but we have, uh, two fortyBs in the works, I, and we have Forest Hills. Um, one of the questions that came up was, was there any old property in town that could be rehabbed into affordable housing? I said, we have a large mill in the North End, it's not completely vacant and it was going to be a grow facility. Uh, I don't know what happened to that, but that would be the only large piece of property like some of the cities have been able to convert into affordable housing. Um, so if, if, uh, in doing our housing plan, if there was any kind of indication, there might be any space up there if they decide they're not going to become a grow facility, but they might consider affordable housing in a section. Uh, obviously, the consortium would like to know about it because there's funding available to rehab these kinds of properties. The other thing we talked about was the former Dyton Nursing Home, but I believe those are all market units, so, uh, there wouldn't be funding available for that. Um, but maybe when the housing plan is being looked at or who, whatever board commission committee would do this, it might be worth looking into what used to be Dyton surplus. The building's been sitting vacant. It's old, don't know if it could be converted. Uh, there is quite a bit of land that goes with it, parking. Um, but if, in fact, somebody, committee, commission, whatever is, could look into that. If there's any chance that that might be considered, uh, GAFIC would be able to help with purchase of it. And it could be funding also to help rehab it. Um, but it is, again, everyone's trying to find affordable housing. And, uh, we don't have a lot of places in Dyton that you can do much with. So I just made all those notes. The other thing that was brought up, this has been brought up repeatedly and it never gets pursued. Expand the facilities at Lincoln Village. Mr. Howland, who made a presentation before your board earlier, said even several years ago, many years ago, he was involved with the group and they were looking to expand out back because there is woodland out there. And they wanted to put in more facilities, obviously on public water and sewer. That would help us with the ten percent, wouldn't settle it, but was, would certainly help it. But it seems like this never gets off the ground. So if we're gonna be looking at affordable housing, it might be worth finding out the expandability up there. Uh, I think anyone who's been there has looked through there and seen all that woods. And, uh, if the, if the property doesn't belong to the council or whoever owns that facility technically, uh, property can be acquired. But again, if this is gonna be looked at, keep GAFIC in mind because they're gonna have funding available. Um, probably, we're guessing our next regular meeting to talk about budget and funding will be in December, we think, but they're waiting to find out what kind of money HUD is gonna be sending to, uh, the consortium, so that a budget can be put together and, and it can be broken down into, you know, the first home buyers assistance, the rehabbing money and all that kind of thing, but, um, th- these are all things that could affect Dyton. And, um, I said to the best of my knowledge, excuse me, the only direct assistance residents have received are the first home, first time you buy a home, first time home buyers. And over the years, when I started going to the meetings, it was ten thousand, up to ten thousand, it's up to twenty-five thousand dollars now. So some people have bought affordables in the fortyBs. Um, and, uh, that twenty-five thousand, if, uh, up to twenty-five is approved, it can help, help pay closing costs and even help with the down payment. And if the person or the people stay in those homes long enough, they don't have to pay that back. So we have benefited from that, but, um, uh, GAFIC is always looking for places to spend money and at times we had to, we've had to reallocate money because we couldn't come up with rehab property. So I know that there's a lot of discussion and work being done in Dyton, but these are some things that, uh, if anything comes down the pike, um, get in touch with Jim Howland. Uh, he can answer the questions and, and if there's money out there that can be used, um, he's the man that would be able to help us with that. Um, I just wanted to mention Stormwater Committee meeting today. We are not gonna have a meeting on December twentieth, uh, as last year, we didn't have a December meeting. However, uh, if something urgent comes up, we will schedule a meeting. Uh, our next regular meeting will be the third Wednesday in January. And right now, um, things are sort of at a lull because our two, close to completion, hopefully Brook Street, uh, so farms are now, uh, going to be reviewed. One is already under review by Weston and Sampson. And Clearway, which is the one behind Arujos, will be similarly reviewed to make sure everything's okay. Uh, everything Stormwater is okay, so that, um, a clean recommendation can be made to the building commissioner that Stormwater is all set, uh, with the Clearway project. And then he can take over as far as everything that he needs to, for that project to go live. Uh, Mr. Cruz did report today. He's the, he's been the manager up there. Uh, and he did tell us today that all of the things he told us last month have been completed. Um, so, uh, the next thing is we'll, we'll have this review done. Uh, it will be paid for by then through a fifty-three G account. And so right now, things are a little quiet, so we decided that, uh, we wouldn't schedule the December meeting. And in closing, I just want everybody to know. Hopefully, at lights on, in the pavilion, I am going to have the calendars that the Stormwater Committee gives out every year. But these calendars are one of a kind and hopefully this is gonna continue. All the pictures in the calendar are pictures in Dyton. It's called Landscapes of Dyton. It's at BP, it's being printed right now. If I have enough, if I have some, I will give out what I get. Um, if they are unable to complete everything by, uh, a little over a week, um, I will get the complete order. They will be available, excuse me, they're free. It's part of our Stormwater Education Program. They will be in both town halls. They will be at police, fire stations, uh, Council on Aging, um, two post offices. So if I don't have enough for everybody or I don't get them in time, they will be available and we hope everybody gets a chance to grab a calendar. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm so sorry to speak again, but I just wanted to kind of piggyback. That was very informative about your meeting that you attended. Um, because of the extensive waitlist at Lincoln Village, um, like, it's literally years long, um, for a resident that would wanna move in. Even if you fill out the emergency form, um, that has a very extensive waitlist. We, through our, um, department, had two residents at a very high risk of homelessness that we had to assist. So it's definitely an issue with affordable housing. Um, I'm speaking just from my experience with the seniors. Um, but that's, I didn't know that they had that kind of money that they'd be able to offer for rehab proj, uh, projects in town, so. I would also recommend we do maybe, I don't know even what department that would go through, but there's absolutely a need, especially with the seniors, um, living on very fixed incomes.
Obviously, the housing authority would have to be involved, but when I have raised this issue in the past a number of times, the response I get is, oh, that's federal and it's like you don't wanna deal with it. Well, GAFIC gets their money from HUD, which is federal. And GAFIC is saying, Jim Howland said, I brought that up years ago when he was a resident, but he's also worked there for years. So if there's any way we can expand Lincoln Village and get financial assistance to do it, I don't care how much red tape there is with what agency, we need to pursue it. Because it's gonna meet a need and it doesn't impact so much other facilities like schools and things. And it's a great service.
Thank you, thank you, continue voting. Um, there's nobody on Zoom, correct?
No.
Alright, um, move on to the approval of the minutes.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of November first, twenty twenty-three.
I will step down and second that. Can I get a vote?
Aye.
An aye and an aye.
Madam Chairman, I would like to make a motion to adjourn.
I will second down, I will step, second down, I will step down and second that. Can I get a vote?
Aye.
Aye.